Good evening and welcome to our Smyrna Town Council meeting. I will call our meeting to order and tonight, our prayer, we are going to ask Dan Zier to come forward to do our prayer and our pledge is going to be done by our Fire Chief, Chief Bill Coberson. If everyone stand with us, please.
All your goodness to us and your mercy and your grace and your love and thank you for bringing us all here today. Thank you for your creation and thank you that you've created us all in your image, Lord. And that because you are the great creator, we are your little creators. I pray that we would create good things today and throughout our lives. We love you and we praise you. Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dan. And Chief, Ms. Diane, if you'll do roll call, please.
Councilman Toad.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Morell.
Present.
Councilwoman Peebles.
Here.
Councilman Short.
Here.
Councilman Sullivan.
Present.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Here.
Mary.
Here. Okay, we will move on to item three, which is approval or corrections of the June 8, 2021 and June 24, 2021 meetings. Jeff, are these in order?
In order as before, ma'am.
Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I will announce.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say a. Any opposed? Minutes pass. We'll now move on to item four, correspondence and communications. Anything tonight?
Nothing this evening, ma'am.
Okay. We'll move on to awards and recognitions. Looks like we have awards for the art crawl winners.
Yes, ma'am. You and maybe council person Raquel Peebles come down front and I'll announce and you can present the certificates and the winnings. So, the art crawl has taken place. Again, we had a great art crawl, heard a lot of wonderful things. Several of our businesses downtown got involved in the art crawl this year, the Nesting Project, Genardi's Ice Cream, Carpe Artista, and Carpe Cafe. And at this time, it's my pleasure to announce a couple of winners. The first category was the veterans category beneath, beneath Kenneth? Beneath Wilson, I'm sorry. He made a metal and wood carving sculpture and from recycled materials. He won first place in the veterans category. Come on up.
So, you can see on the screen what a great artist that you are and we appreciate your participation in the art crawl and I'm going to present you this. So, Chief Bill? Anything you'd like to say?
Thank you and I had a great time and I hope to do it again.
Great. Thank you so much and we appreciate your service.
The next category, the adult category, Dan Zier. He does watercolor paintings and he is here this evening, so.
Great.
This was the People's Choice Award.
And here is your, anything you'd like to say?
No, just thank you.
Great. Thank you for participating.
There were two other categories and I'll just announce the winners. The youth category was Josie Hackinson. And then we had a new category this year called best use of themes and this was chosen by Arts Committee themselves. And the winner was Roan Brown, youth artist. They were not able to be here with us tonight. I think their art is up on the screen there. So, thank you all for coming and those that were not able to be here, thank you for participating in the art crawl.
Raquel, anything you want to add about anything that happened?
We had some new venues for the art this year and I think we had a lot more people that participated, so I'm looking forward to it next year as well.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for reminding me. We also.
We thought you had popcorn up there.
That's right. I did. I thought it was popcorn. I got all excited.
That's why I sat there. I thought that was for me.
Yeah. Tom, you going to take care of this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks a lot. A few weeks ago, June 19, we had the 13th Annual Boat Day event out Jefferson, Jefferson Springs Park. We had about 400 people participating in the event. We had a variety of kayaks and canoes that we brought out, partly donated by Parks Department and Sheriff's Department as well. Project WEP was out there, TDEC and US Coast Guards in attendance. Had a lot of families out there having a great time on the water. Only a couple of people capsized, but I think everybody kind of laughed and had a great time when they're out there.
Was that me?
It was not the town manager. I want to also thank Academy Sports. Every year, they've helped us out by donating items for us to give away to the people who were in attendance. And anybody who came out and signed the form, we put their name in the little bucket. It's not a popcorn bucket, but it is a popcorn bucket. But we put their name in the bucket and we're giving away, thanks to Academy Sports, donated the Heritage Angler 10 and a Pelican Premium. So, if you want to pick a name out there first, this is for the Heritage Angler 10 kayak.
Any chance you're giving a jacket away?
I know. It's pretty chilly though. I'll see what I can do about the thermostat.
You know what a premium Pelican is, don't you, ma'am?
Oh, can I just, you already.
Yeah.
Just one or?
Just one and this is for the Heritage Angler 10.
And the winner is Jay Turner.
And now, this one's for the Pelican Premium and we'll let the winners know and we'll be giving them away at Academy.
And this winner is Reagan Ross.
All right. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
I'll grab that.
Okay.
Later tonight. Here's your microphone.
Okay. Anything else under awards and recognitions tonight?
No, ma'am. I saw.
Okay.
Everybody did a great job and I just want to throw that out there. Raquel did a good job with the art crawl. And to Diane, a good friend of mine, their family over there, congratulations. He's been painting for a lot of years and so his works are quite attractive and I'm glad he got to expose that and win that as much as all the other artists that did as well, so.
Can also give kudos to Melissa.
Melissa Scott.
For she actually oversaw all of the art that came in and the Smyrna Art Cooperative. They were very instrumental in putting everything together.
Great. It takes team effort.
Definitely a team.
We will now move on to our consent agenda and these are items that are deemed by the town manager to be routine items that don't necessarily need to be discussed individually. But if a council member wants to pull one off and vote on it separately, we can do that. I do always like to read the consent agenda so those in attendance, as well as those at home, know what we're voting on. So, item A is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with TMG USA relative to mowing parcels and lots that are in violation of the Smyrna Municipal Code 13-104, overgrown and dirty lots for the 2021-22 fiscal year. Item B, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an annual agreement with Hawkins Asphalt to perform milling and resurfacing of various roads. Item C is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Kerr Brothers relative to the street striping services for various roads around town. Item D is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a one-year contract extension with Sweeping Corp, Corporation of America to provide street sweeping services for the town. Item E is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Bush Construction relative to natural gas construction additions. Item F, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Consolidated Pipe relative to the gas piping. Item G, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an amendment with CUD to shift one 12-acre parcel on Sam Griffin Road from CUD to Smyrna. Item H, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a ground lease amendment with the Smyrna Rutherford County Airport Authority for Lee Victory Park. Item I, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a seventh amendment to lease agreement with the Smyrna Rutherford County Airport Authority for the property currently being utilized for the Smyrna Municipal Golf Course. Item J, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement regarding tap fees with the Smyrna Rutherford County Airport Authority. Item K, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with City Works relative to the permitting software. And item L, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute amendment number five with TDOT to the original contract to extend the expiration date and revise funding on the weekly lane intersection at Swan Drive LM 0.1, .35 in Smyrna. Is there any item that council would like to pull off and discuss individually? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move and approve.
A motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say a. Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. We'll now move on to old business. Tonight, we have three public hearings. Our first one is consideration of an ordinance relative to the amendment of the approved PRD for property located on Tax Map 32, parcel 9.04 requested by Adam Green. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately 5.77 acres and is located on Blair Road and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Mr. Mayor and Council, this is an amendment to an existing approved PRD. It is on Blair Road directly across from Portico Place and approximately 700 feet north of the intersection with Sammerly Parkway West. Land use plan will support an office retail multifamily mix in this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of C2, R6, and R1 in Smyrna, and PDR and I2 in Laverne. This is, existing approved PRD would allow 16 detached single-family lots. Proposed amendment would allow for a development with 33 townhouses. Access would be from Blair Road via an extension of Portico Place, which would connect to the adjoining residential development in Laverne. Minimum square footage would be 1,551 square feet. Portico Place would be a public street, but the two internal cul-de-sacs would be private. An approved industrial development in Laverne will be responsible for making improvements to Blair Road and as well as the intersection with Sammerly Parkway in front of this property. It's attached to pattern book. There was, Planning Commission did recommend approval with a couple of changes or conditions, that a public sidewalk is required along Blair Road and to provide ornamental black metal fencing no more than three feet tall in the front yard of each unit. And the pattern book was amended to reflect those requirements. There have been no changes on this since you looked at it for first reading.
Questions for Kevin on this?
You probably already discussed it, but I don't remember the answer. The townhomes, are they for sale or for rent?
They would be for sale.
For sale, okay.
Other questions for Kevin? Okay, seeing no questions for Kevin, this is a public hearing, so I'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and go to council for motion.
I'll move. We approve.
A motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say a. Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next public hearing is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 50, parcel 7.07, from C2 to PUD requested by Rob Mulchon. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately 4.48 acres and is located on Seven Oaks Boulevard and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Mr. Mayor and Council, this is a rezoning request on Seven Oaks Boulevard, about 1,300 feet from the intersection with Amville Road. The land use plan will support an office retail multifamily mix in this area. Surrounding zoning is C2 and PRD, which is the villages of Seven Oaks, which is directly across the street. This proposed PUD is for a development with 26,000 square feet of office warehouse space and two buildings, as well as an 89,752 square feet of self-storage space in one building. Access would be from Seven Oaks Boulevard in one location with a connection to the adjoining office warehouse development at the rear of the site. The proposed uses in the two office warehouse buildings would be as allowed in C2. Again, I did attach the pattern book as recommended along with the, or the rezoning request. The Planning Commission did review this, did recommend approval unanimously, and nothing has changed on this since you looked at it on first reading.
Questions for Kevin? Or comments? Okay, seeing none, we will go to the public to see if there is anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to council for a motion.
Move to approve.
A motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say a. Any opposed? Motion passes. Our last public hearing tonight is consideration of an ordinance relative to the text of the Design Review Manual to amend Section 3.4 Architectural Character and this is a second reading.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this is a text amendment to the Design Review Manual in Section 3.4 Architectural Character. It would remove, remove plaster as an allowed material, move tile, stucco, and ephes to only being allowed as secondary materials, and requiring at least 75% of any building facade that's visible from a public street is required to be finished with those primary materials that are listed. And at least 50% of the entire building must have those exterior materials, primary exterior materials as well. The Planning Commission did review this, did recommend approval, and it, we did change it a little bit on first reading regarding the tile and so that this is reflected in the agenda or in the amendment that's in front of you.
Okay. Questions for Kevin on this? Counsel, any comments? Seeing none, we will go to the public at this time to see if anyone is here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and go to council for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'm not surprised.
I was waiting on him.
A motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? Did you want to discuss or did you just want to make the motion?
I'm happy to go with it. We'll talk about the tile in about five more years.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second with little discussion? All in favor say a. Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to new business. We have a couple items under the Planning Commission report. The first one is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and PID zoning of property located on Tax Map 50, part of parcel 22.00, as well as parcels 23.00 and 23.01. It's requested by Pro Lodges, Lodges? Lodges. LP on behalf of multiple property owners containing 73.53 acres. The properties are located south and west of Amville Road and I-24 and this is a first reading.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this, this item, as well as your next item, are very related. So, I'm going to kind of discuss both of them at the same time. This first item is the annexation request. It's three tracts of land that has been requested to be annexed into the town and zone PID. This does border I-24, the longest border on the east, northeast side. A land use plan would support a light industrial commercial mix in this area. Surrounding zoning is C2 and I2 in town and RM in Rutherford County. The town would be providing all services to this area upon annexation except for water, which would be provided by CUD. Sewer would connect to the Olive Branch Extension when it is completed, which is, as everyone is aware, is under construction. A 4.55 acre portion of parcel 22 would not be included with the annexation as this property has been divided up. The owner of that parcel did not request annexation and so we cannot annex that portion of the parcel, of this land, since they did not consent to the annexation. This there, that area, that four and a half acre area does contain an existing house, which would continue to utilize the existing property access near the I-24 interchange. The proposed PID is for an industrial development containing 837,200 square feet and three buildings. Access would be from a private ingress egress easement, which would be extended from the existing industrial park, which is south of the site. The, which would also provide access at the signalized intersection in Midway Lane, as well as the separate access to Amville Road that's on the south, southern, southwestern corner of that industrial park. The company request, which is the next item on your agenda, which has to track separately since it's already within the city, is, which is a rezoning request. That parcel of land was where that connection would be made to that existing park. The uses within this PID would be as allowed in the I2 Light Industrial District. A traffic study was completed and was attached to your, in your packet. Improvements would include adding a left turn lane at the secondary entrance, as well as re-timing several signals in the area. The Planning Commission did review this, did recommend approval, 5, 4, 1 against, with four conditions. One, the connection to the Olive Branch Public Sewer Line is not allowed until completion of construction. An ingress egress easement is required to connect to the adjoining South Park Development, provide documentation of this easement prior to the site plan approval. Parcel 23 is labeled incorrectly as 2301 on the plans. Ask them to correct that. And an adequate fire flow as required by the adopted fire code must be provided prior to issuance of any building permits for the site. At this time, we are in the dark as to what the fire flow is in that area. We have not been informed by CUD what it is, so we want to obviously know that before we can get building permits or issue any building permits if this is approved. And I believe that's all that I have.
Questions for Kevin? Comments from Mark or Tim?
I guess Mark or Tim, what was the discussion? Obviously, somebody voted against. What was the discussion at planning? What was the issue?
They were concerned about vehicles that were parked on the road at, at times.
The, the existing industrial park where the road access will be coming through, there's going to have to be some improvements to that roadway, internal, which is all private roadways, just to make the traffic flow. There are, at times, there are cars parked where this travel lane will be. And so, there would have to be some improvements made in that area. I think that was part of the discussion.
Right. Where on this map is that road, that connection you're talking about? Is it right between the two industrial buildings coming up?
It is. It would be, yes. It would go across, the parcel that's kind of highlighted in blue there is a parcel that's already within the city that would be rezoned as part of this. And so, you would make the connection then. That actually borders Olive Branch. There'll be a bridge across the creek there that would then connect and then connect in between the two existing industrial buildings that do show up on that park, on that photo.
And there would be no access from Olive Branch Road?
There would not be any access from Olive Branch Road.
And the road that's down here by the, I think it's Pets R Us now, down on Amville Road, there's a little road beside it that we had some discussion about a couple of years ago. That road wouldn't have access through that property to it, is it?
Only that existing house, it would remain, would still use that existing driveway. That would be it, other than the Pets R Us store.
Right. And that was part of the discussion, that we didn't want to mix any industrial road usage with residential type usage. And that was, you know, why we didn't want to make that connection.
Do you feel like there's enough buffering between the industrial and the residential there?
There's quite a bit of, of course, the existing creek and some of that existing area is really going to remain. area is really going to remain untouched, a lot of it. But yeah, they're more than adequate and more than meeting our requirements, certainly for buffering between the industrial and the residential along the west side. On the north side, there'll be a little bit, not as much left natural buffer, but they're still meeting our requirements with the berm in addition to the landscaping on top of the berm.
Kevin, when I was watching the planning commission, and I think you said then that there had not been any comments from neighbors or anything at that time. It's been a couple of weeks. Have you heard anything since then?
Yeah, we have had some calls, but nothing more about it for informational purposes. We haven't had a lot of negative calls, really, of any kind. And since then, nothing's really changed since the planning commission.
If I understand correctly, the road that runs right beside, I can't remember the name, right beside Legends, that would be another way into it. Is that correct?
Yes.
But it's not a straight shot through there.
It's not, no. No, it would be, that is the signalized intersection where anyone coming back to 24 from these buildings, they're going to have to go through the park and come out at Midway Lane.
Kevin, I'd always kind of looked at Olive Branch as a road which would link up with Ambleville Road and give some relief parallel to the interstate and from those homes over there. I guess that there's still ways that they could go around through Seminary and such as that, but Olive Branch doesn't show up on the major thoroughfare plan anywhere, does it?
It actually is, and we talked about that at the planning commission. And I think if you had a, you know, a different development, you might want to look at potentially that. If you had some, you know, a commercial, maybe some residential mix or something like that, that would make some sense. It actually shows coming through and tying into Courier Place, actually is where it shows the tie-in at. We didn't think it was really appropriate with an industrial development. If this is the development pattern that we want to see here is with an industrial here...
You don't see any way that it could possibly skirt the development and still connect? I mean, it just looks to me like it's a valuable road. We find out, you know, years later, well, I wish we hadn't done that, à la Genie Lane, and don't want to look back on this after a number of years and say, you know, where's this? Why doesn't this connect?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's property would still be available there. You're looking at another bridge across the creek, and then you're going through quite a bit of floodplain area and things of that nature.
Look at what we're going through with Genie Lane. I mean, you know...
So, I mean, this wouldn't completely preclude it. It would make it more difficult, certainly, but I think it would completely preclude that connection still being made. I just think it's, you would have a lot of road that really would be, there wouldn't be anything on it because you're going to have, if you keep the industrial development separate.
Wouldn't be anything on it, but you would have people using it.
You could have people using it, and I'm just saying, it's a lot of road to build for some trust.
I think there's some concerns too about that road coming out, would it amble with already what we have in congestion on that interchange?
It would take some serious looking to get it in.
Well, I mean, and that's what I'm afraid of, is that, you know, you would just about have to find a way to signalize that with the traffic, even when the diverging diamond went in at some point in the next couple of years. If you look at where Courier Place is now, it's pretty hard to get out of there. We really are pushing traffic away from that and making it come back to this lighted intersection.
Which one is Courier? Courier?
It's just past the little pet store there. There's a road that kind of goes back up in there to the house.
Yeah.
But Courier's the next one up. That would be my concern about if we brought a lot of traffic off Olive Branch all the way down, then the congestion right there at that interchange is going to be pretty tough to deal with.
Yeah, well, I didn't realize that's where we were talking about. I was thinking that Olive Branch would come down and connect in between the I-2 buildings and come out at the light beside Legends.
That's a go-back-to, do you really want to move residential traffic through that industrial park? Because if you brought it in that way, you're going to put it into the industrial park.
Yeah, and the other part is you split that industrial parcel pretty much in half by doing that.
Kind of like driving through the airbase.
Exactly.
And I don't know if there's much real use there for any kind of commercial entity, is there?
Well, we have the existing commercial property there that kind of has frontage on Courier. It's still available as a commercial piece.
It's not a suprime location for a commercial entity, I don't think. There's a lot of floodplain in there, as I recall. Didn't you mention?
There is quite a bit of floodplain along Olive Branch.
So there's those challenges too with elevations.
Other questions or comments? Then do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
A motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I think I want to oppose it.
One opposed, Ms. Dahan. Item two. Kevin, consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map 50, parcel 54.00, to go from I-2 to C2 and C2 to PID, requested by Prologis.
Prologis.
Thanks, Steve. Prologis LP. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately 9.9 acres and is located west of Ambleville Road, and this is a first reading. Kevin, anything else to add?
There's nothing else to add. Again, it's just a parcel that's highlighted in blue there that would be rezoned instead of being annexed and zoned.
Okay. Tim or Mark, anything?
No, nothing.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'm going to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
So, it's relating back to the road. So the road that we're talking about, where we're not going to add additional traffic, it will still have industrial traffic on it, correct?
It's an industrial park.
Right. But I'm saying, but there's that residential portion. How do you, and so the house is the only residence there, so that's why it's the only thing that would be affected.
Right, and it has a private drive that comes out down by the pet shop that won't change, and that will service just that house.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure I had that correct or clear.
What is in that property that zones C2 there?
Well, you have the vacant tract. I mean, you've got the, I mean, there's the liquor store and the Captain D subway building and some things through there. Is that what you're talking about on the west side of it?
Right below the tag for the parcel we're talking about now, that...
In this area right here?
Yep.
Yeah, that's just a vacant tract right now.
So what do we see happening there?
Well, I think, I think long-term, you may see some additional commercial development in that area. That's been a much slower area to develop commercially than Sam Ridley has, certainly, but, I mean, I think you could see potentially having, you know, a hotel or restaurants or things like that.
But the access to it's going to be quite contentious, just like what we're talking about?
Yeah. It's got existing access at Courier Place. We'll have to figure that out, but that's its only, it has access, it does have frontage on Ambleville Road as well, but at an even worse location than the Courier Place access.
Yeah, I was kind of thinking that industrial road comes up between the two buildings there and connects, that if that C2 ever develops, that it really needs to come over to that road.
Well, if the C2 develops, it'll develop with a frontage on Ambleville Road there. It won't develop to the backside of it. I can see the backside of it filling in with more.
That's what we're saying, though. That frontage there is too close to the Ambleville interchange to be signalized, and so it's going to be a problem.
So it may be the entire track eventually comes in as industrial.
Right. Or, yeah, gets amended as part of the other parcel or something else, yeah.
Other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item three, consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map 28, part of parcel 44.00, to go from R6 to PRD. It's requested by Alyssa Seben, and the property requested to be rezoned contains approximately 39.1 acres and is located on Sam Ridley Parkway West and Motlow College Boulevard, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a tract of land that has frontage on Sam Ridley Parkway, as well as Motlow College Boulevard. It will also have frontage on Genie Lane when it is constructed, and it also has access to Jackdaw Court, which is currently under construction, which would be a small street to the west. Land use plan for the area would support an office-retail multifamily mix. Surrounding zoning is R6 and C2. This proposed PRD is for development with 462 residential units. This would be broken down into 350 apartments, 46 duplex units in 23 buildings, and then 66 single-family houses. Access would be from Motlow College Boulevard, Genie Lane, and Jackdaw Court. The density with this number of units would be 11.8 per acre. All of these units would be for rent. Just for comparison purposes, the number of units allowed in the R6 district would be 567. A traffic study was submitted comparing the proposed development plan with the study that was done on the previous approved plan for Ravens Point, and this study shows that the traffic generated by this development would actually be less than the previous plan, and so there would be no additional improvements beyond what was already planned for Ravens Point, which includes some improvements in Sam Ridley Parkway, signalizing the street that would be accessing Sam Ridley there, and then as well as the improvements, of course, extensions of Genie Lane. Did attach the development plan, which has all the layout, utilities, building elevations, and all that. The planning commission did recommend approval of this request, 6, 4, 0 against.
Okay, questions for Kevin on this? It's a pretty large development.
Kevin, did I hear you say it was a gated community during planning?
Yeah, there'll be three access points, and they'll all have gates, yes.
But there's no cut to the highway? No cut into that property?
Yes, correct, right.
How much of, the previously approved Ravens Point, what does that consist of?
Well, it's all, other than the portion that's been rezoned C2, it all still has an R6 zoning. They had a master plan that they developed, that they utilized for purposes of developing the traffic study, which had some commercial in this area where they're proposing this residential development, also some residential as you get closer to Motlow Boulevard.
That's the one that's in our packet here, that shows commercial self-storage and...
Correct.
But so instead, okay, showing that part, the upper portion of the property on that plan shows healthcare, 450 apartment units, student housing, approximately 200 units, student retail apartments. I mean, is that part still on the back burner for now, or where are we with, I mean, we're talking a whole lot of apartments on the whole parcel.
Right. I mean, I think as far as what's going to happen west, for north and west of Genie Lane, I haven't seen any development plans on that at this time, so I don't know exactly what they're thinking of that still. I know Motlow was very interested in and was excited to see some potential for some housing geared toward students, I know, so I know that part of it was something I know they were looking at. I think it's up to, you know, I don't know what the developers is looking at, but I know that that was something they were very interested in.
I just think the original plan, I mean, shows great promise there. I mean, with the commercial and the self-storage area and the apartments back in the back, I mean, using the commercial adjacent to Sam Ridley Parkway just seems like the most practical way. I mean, we have a lot of concerns about how much traffic is going to be on Sam Ridley Parkway, and this really intensifies the prospects of that, much less over here on, what is it, Jackdaw and then on Genie Lane.
Well, Kevin mentioned something that I think is good for public consumption here. This whole track, as I recall, Kevin, was an R6 zone, right, at one time? So, we were able to get a PRD out of some of it, right, and then much of it's been turned into commercial, especially the frontage portions of it. But from the public's perception, we hear this all the time, we're sick of apartments, we don't want more apartments, and, you know, the thing here is, the zoning covers apartments. So, we're allowed to take a look at this and see if they can meet us in the middle and do a nice product there, but ultimately the zoning is what it is. We can't, we don't have the authority to change that. So these apartments can come at their will because of the current R6 zoning that they have. Anything they do to improve that is just a feather in our cap, and that's why we liked the one that came before. They gave us a better, more intense view of it with the on-street park and the streetscapes and so forth. So, I just want the public to understand, we kind of feel your grief sometimes, we feel the pain, but lawfully, we don't get to change a zone that's already there. So, I just want to put that out there.
Other questions or comments?
Well, the second piece to what Mark was talking about and what we looked at planning is if we did all apartment units here, it would allow for an additional 105 apartments here. So the fact that we do have a combination of apartments, duplexes, and some single-family type housing here, it mixes it up and it reduces the potential density by 105 units.
Lessens the impact.
Yes.
Even though there's an impact.
This is just apartments and townhomes, correct?
Well, rentals.
Rentals.
That's what I was going to say, but there are going to be some single families.
Some of them, 66 of the units will actually be constructed like a single-family house. They are all rentals. They'll all be, it's all going to be managed like one complex. The amenities and everything for the single family and the multifamily will all be used by everyone. There's not going to be individual lots created. It's going to be all one parcel.
And one of the things that was discussed at the planning commission meeting, but I don't think it was answered, was at the time someone had asked about price points, and the young lady said that someone else in her group could answer that, but they never did get back to that. So I'm still curious to know what that's going to look like for the price points.
I don't know the answer to that either. There'd be someone here that might could answer that, but I could not answer that point.
Kevin, the part that's facing Sam Ridley, if I'm positioned correctly on Sam Ridley, that part of Sam Ridley is pretty elevated right there. There's, I want to say, like a 20-foot rock bluff right there. Do you know if they're planning to cut that down to grade, or is that elevation going to stay?
Yeah, I don't know. I know the answer to that either. That may be something that they may have looked at that internally, kind of what they're looking as far as that. I know that it does grade, it does generally flow kind of to the southeast. The detention area is in that southeastern corner because that's where it's naturally the best place for it, so...
Yeah. I just, right, I'm looking at one of your maps that shows the topo lines. They're extremely close together, right next to Sam Ridley right there, so it's pretty, it's a sheer face there.
It's a pretty steep topo.
And my only thought there was, is as much as we hear about people not wanting apartments and aesthetics and all of that, this apartment is an elevated piece of property that's 20 feet up. It's not in your line of sight. You know, this is a type of property that you can kind of build. I think if there's a place to build them, this is probably it. It fits the area. We have apartments across the street. It's not sandwiched in around other houses. We often talked about putting stuff in the right area, and if there is an area, this seems to be like a fit for the area.
And Tim pointed out, an R6 allows about 14 and 1/2 units per acre. They're only requesting a little over 11 here, so the density is softer than what it could be. They could come in and just pile them in there at 14 and 1/2 units per acre because they have the zoning in place already.
Yeah, they could have built 567 apartments without us getting any say.
Exactly.
So, there were two questions asked that, if there's somebody here that can answer the, can you come forward? If you'll come forward and state your name and the business in which you represent?
Hello, my name is Alyssa Seben. Good job getting that correct, by the way. I work for the developer, Second Wave Development. Do you need my address, if any chance?
We'll probably do for the record for Ms. Dahan.
5231 South... Five-two-three-one South Jewelsburn Court, Tampa, Florida.
Thank you.
And this is Troy.
Yeah, Troy Gardner, Mount Landscape Architect with the Reagan Smith Associates.
Great. So Raquel's question was price point, do we know anything about price point?
So I should have researched it a little bit more before I came today, but I don't honestly know exactly. They are luxury apartments, if that does help at all. I don't know exactly what the rents will be, and I don't know that we honestly even have that determined yet, exactly. I asked Troy to come up to speak to the grades a little bit. There is, you're correct, a rock face on Sam Ridley. We could not get access to the site from Sam Ridley, and I don't think we're going to be impacting that greatly, but he can speak to that better.
No, we're not planning to make any major impacts to the grading there. That should stay in place. There's actually a twenty-four-inch water line that runs in that area, so, you know, we don't want to have to mess with that.
So those, those buildings down here in the bottom corner that are kind of on Sam Ridley, they will actually be essentially twenty feet up in the air from Sam Ridley?
More or less, yes.
Yeah.
Other comments or questions?
Do we know if there's an HOA or a third-party developer there, the third-party development through HOA, has that been reached yet?
There won't be an HOA, we will have a third-party management company.
Property management?
Yes, yes, who will manage the property as one.
What about the single-family portion of it?
All of it will be managed as one development. Same amenities, same clubhouse.
Is that third-party or is that in-house?
It's all the same third-party manager, management company.
Other questions? Thank you all. Any other questions, comments, or discussion?
There was one other thing that was mentioned. Someone mentioned something about sidewalks inside the complex or pedestrian crossing over at Genie Lane towards Motlow. So I just didn't know if that was something that y'all had talked about.
That's something, and you know, this is approved, when this comes in for a site plan, we would look at that in a lot more detail. But yeah, we would want to be, make sure that there is, I mean, they'll have sidewalks internal and be sidewalks along Genie Lane, Motlow Boulevard. We would look at the best location for something like that, and we would look at that for sure.
Is that, is that Genie Lane-Motlow intersection expected to be signaledized?
I don't believe it's at this time, no.
Not yet?
No.
Yeah, with, with this amount of homes and that being really a primary way out, it may be something we have to do.
It may be something we have to look at at some point, but not at this time.
Was that part of the traffic study?
Because I thought, you know, you had said they had already done one.
Yeah, there, that was not a part of the traffic study, that that, that that would be signaledized at that intersection, no.
Because it doesn't exist yet, right? They can't.
But, I mean, I guess we'll have to take a look at it as Motlow Boulevard, the property the town owns, the property, some additional property up next to Motlow. At some point, it may, it may be warranted.
City's call at that point, they're not, the state would have no relevance in that.
It would be a city call, yes.
Yeah, there's no state, so it's our choice, right? It just, to me, to make it a crosswalk there, it would need to be signaledized, I think, would make sense, and it may be warranted anyway once this starts developing, so, perfect.
I don't think it lined up with the road going into Motlow, that it was close, but I don't think it lined up.
I don't think it does.
I think...
The thing I saw when I was looking through the maps, that it wasn't, it was real close, but it didn't appear to be exactly a cross.
Yeah, I, I think it might, but I think it's clear that was the intent, I think, was that it would more or less line up.
Maybe it's a draw.
Other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
We can move to approve.
A motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Item four, consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of Tax Map eighteen, parcel six point zero zero, to go from I three to I one, requested by Frederick Grace, containing approximately eight point five acres. The property is located at the corner of Northwest Lowry Street and Aviation Parkway, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a, this property, as you said, is at the corner of Lowry and Aviation Parkway. Land use plan would support heavy industrial development in this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of I three and then the fleet equipment storage, PUD, to the northwest. Proposed use is allowed in both districts. Primary reason for the request is that the building setbacks in I one would allow for greater flexibility in siding the building on the property, including allowance for the truck docks to be on the rear of the building instead of the front of the building. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval, six-four-zero against.
Questions, comments, or Mark or Tim, anything you want to add?
Chairman, are you recommending approval for this?
Yes, yes.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
So the main reason for wanting to make the change had to do with the truck docks? Am I correct?
Well, it just, the setbacks, an I three are the most restrictive setbacks we have, hundred feet front and fifty feet side and rear. And I one would allow them to go to a thirty-foot front with a twenty-foot side and rear. And so this would allow them that their, which they had a concept plan, which is in your, in your packet there, that's, it would allow them to push the building closer to the road, which gives them that ability to have those truck docks in the back. Otherwise, they would have to push the building for, much further back from the road, and which would almost force the truck docks to be in the front, so.
Raquel, I think that, that was one of our main reasons for supporting this, is that, to have the docks in the back of the building versus the front.
Other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item five is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map fifty-four, part of parcel fifty point zero one, and amend the approved PRD on Tax Map fifty-four, parcel fifty-one point zero zero, requested by Sean Collins and Andre Jaquil, containing approximately fifteen point two acres. The properties are located at eighty-one sixty-two and eighty-two eighty-six Rocky Fork Amleville Road, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a, it's an amendment to an existing PRD, as well as adding some additional property to that PRD. The, on Rocky Fork Amleville Road, southeast of the intersection with Morton Lane, land use plan would support a medium-density residential development here in this area. Surrounding zoning is R three and Cedar Hills PRD in town, and RM in Rutherford County. This would rezone a portion of parcel fifty point zero one from R three to PRD and incorporate that into the approved PRD for Stewart's Glen. The existing PRD approval is for development with twenty single-family lots and thirty-two townhouses. This amendment would allow for eighteen single-family lots and forty-one townhouses for a net increase of seven units. The overall density would increase from three point seven per acre to three point nine per acre. Access would be from Rocky Fork Amleville Road at three different locations. Minimum square footage would be sixteen hundred square feet. And the townhouse portion, which are, they're labeled cottages on the plans in your packets, would be age-restricted. This development would be served by CUD. The fire flow at this time is not adequate, so they will have to have some improvements made before they could get any building permits. The single-family lots would be served by public street, but the streets within the townhouse area would be private. The planning commission did review this and did recommend approval.
Okay, anything additional?
I'll add that when the commission reviewed this, you know, first of all, the density, the increase was, I mean, it's, it's not even detectable, really, when you look at it, going from three point seven to three point nine. And I think the big thing is that we've gone up nine units as far as the senior living that's age-restricted, and we've added an acre to this. So when you look at the balance and you look at what we're gaining for the seniors, it's a good product and a good change to this PRD.
I miss what the square footage was on these, for the...
It's sixteen hundred, which is...
For the cottages also?
Yes.
And the...
Yes, for both, yes. And which is what was approved previously as well.
Minimal.
Minimal.
Right, very good.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I move to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
I'll be abstaining, Diane.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with one abstention. We'll now move on to item B, our packaged liquor board report. We have one item to consider. It's a consideration and application for a certificate of compliance for a packaged liquor store for Mr. Patel Smyrna Divine Wine and Spirits located at two ninety-two Sam Ridley Parkway East. Jeff?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this, obviously, is a location of an existing store, which is being purchased. This was given a positive recommendation on June the first at the Packaged Liquor Board, and paperwork is in order, and I recommend approval.
Just procedural, just from my knowledge, one of the things that was brought up is in the application, it states that Mr. Patel and others are buying the building, however, others is not provided, is that...
All of those notes have been addressed through, and there were, we sought clarification back in May and received that before we went to Packaged Liquor Board. You're just seeing notes that were passed along there, so I apologize.
Okay. Other questions for Jeff? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
I thought everybody was frozen up here.
Mm-hmm.
It's that cold. Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to item C, which is consideration of a resolution approving funding for the nonprofit organizations for the fiscal year 2021, 2022. Sierra?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Comptroller of the Treasury of the State of Tennessee requires a resolution stating the agency, purpose, and dollar amount to be approved before any funds can be remitted to nonprofit agencies.
Any questions for Sierra on this?
We're glad to see you tonight. Has this the first time you were before us?
It is, actually.
We should have some questions for you.
I'm hoping you don't.
Did you practice a bunch at home before?
No, Rex threw this at me this afternoon.
That's kind of the best way to get it. The best way, no nerves, that's right, that's right, so.
But I do have some questions, don't I?
Any questions for Sierra? This is something we're pretty used to having to do each year, so.
Okay, seeing no questions, do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion, do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
We're glad to have you with us tonight.
Thank you.
We won't be as hard on you next time.
Yeah, we will. We might have questions next time. We'll get some ready.
That's right.
Item D, consideration of an ordinance relative to an amendment to the Town and Smirnoff Municipal Code Title fifteen Motor Vehicles Traffic and Parking, Chapter six Parking, and this is a first reading. Jeff, are you taking this?
Yes, Mayor and Council, as we discussed at the workshop, the only thing that this amendment will do, it just allows the police department to, in addition to the codes department, enforce six oh five, six oh six, and six oh nine, which deals with motorized vehicles and on residential property and prohibited parking spaces and tractor-trailer trucks in residential areas.
Okay, questions for Jeff on this?
The only question I have is, right now, codes goes out, they usually, you know, issue the warning and then move that way out. Does this mean that the police goes out, it's just a citation, or is there still the warning, same process?
For different types of offenses, you may have, certain property offenses may be codified that we have to give a ten-day notice or thirty-day notice.
Gotcha.
These would not be. You could issue a citation immediately, however, the officer does have discretion to issue a warning.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure that the expectations wasn't really changing for...
Correct.
The average person, right? That we're still going to follow the same process that we've always followed, it's just we now have more people helping enforce it.
Correct, especially after those hours when codes may not be here.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to our appointment of one member of the Board of Directors of the Limeball Public Library to serve a three-year term. And Jeff, this is a council appointment, correct?
Yes, it's true.
Okay, we only had one individual that applied, Silvanya Rowe, and do I hear a motion?
Sounds like Silvanya got a job.
I agree.
I will move that we approve Ms. Rowe. She's been involved in the Friends organization for a while, and I think she's, even though she's the only candidate applied, I think she's probably the best candidate, anyway, so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to appointment of one member of the Parks Advisory Board to serve an unexpired term ending 2022. And Jeff, am I correct that this is appointed by mayor and confirmed by council?
That's correct.
Great. So we had five applicants, and they are Reba Gilpin, Michelle Ward, Grace Dugan, Adam Johnson, and Bailey Wolf, and I am going to appoint Grace Dugan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Grace, congratulations, and Ms. Rowe, congratulations as well. We are excited to have you all serve on boards that make a difference here in our community. Brian, I know you have something under other tonight?
Yes, Mayor and Council, I would like to, I apologize that we didn't get this in the packet for you. I sent you all a text message today to point this out, but our parks last year did a, or last year, last month at our workshop, made a comprehensive study presentation on these parks, master plan. We do need to get a vote of approval on the master plan from the council, so we can move forward with some grants that we're working on. And I would remind you again, this is a master plan, it is a guideline that we'll use to, you know, as we go forward with parks, but it is a guideline. There will be things that we'll do depending on budgets and those kind of things that will affect this guideline, but we want to, you know, have at least a plan in place. And that's very important right now for us to get the grant opportunities taken care of. So I would ask that you would vote to approve this master plan on behalf of the parks.
Questions for...
One question. So just a month ago, we, we kind of got the initial review, and we got one of these that looks very similar. Is this exactly the same, or are there any changes?
It's exactly the same.
Because it looks pretty much the same, but I...
It's the same document.
Didn't get time to read sixty-seven pages tonight.
It's the same document.
Today, yeah, today. So, so no changes from what we've been presented earlier?
No.
Well, and I'll just tell you, there's nothing that I looked at within all the goals that we wanted to do, either long or short term, that didn't look like it would benefit the town and for the assurance that we'll do this in a fiscally responsible way, and we'll bring these in as we can do it. I'm very good with this.
Okay. I do have a question about, as you say, I understand it's a guide.
Yes.
On those goals, can those be changed at some point?
Oh, and they will change as we, as we go through the process.
Okay, because some of them already have, like, certain times that they have set, and so that's why I was wondering.
That's what I wanted to make sure you understood. Even though they say timelines on those, those are guidelines for us, that those are projected dates, some of those things will happen, some of them will happen sooner, some may be pushed out a little bit depending on physical responsibility.
Okay.
You know, I think Paris is saying that we get our first Parks Master Plan in nineteen ninety-five, and we have done a mostly remarkable job of following that plan as it was laid out. A few things have been done that were not actually in it, but it has been altered three times, Mayor Esther, every five years, right? And so, and I think we missed one time doing it because of...
Don't say COVID.
Huh? Not what, no, it was, I don't remember exactly why it was, but, because we were just busy doing other things, I believe. But, you know, there's, you can see, you can take the ninety-five one, and you can see the framework of our Parks Department and all of our parks in our city in that booklet. And, you know, it's, it's, it's just exactly like the comprehensive plan that we have for the city.
It's a strategic plan for us to carry forward our mission in the Parks Department. And, you know, again, though, it is a guideline, it will be something that will, it's a living document as we move forward.
Well, and everything in regards to budgets brought before council, so there won't be any surprises at all, so... But we have to have this to be able to move forward with that half a million dollar grant.
Questions? Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Any status reports tonight, Brian?
None this evening, ma'am.
Okay. Ms. Diane, anything?
I have nothing.
Brian?
I do have a couple of things to share with the council tonight. I received a really nice note made out to the council, the mayor, and the town manager from the Judy, the family of Judy Lynn Ross, and I just wanted y'all to know they acknowledged our well wishes during their time of mourning, so... Something I wanted to bring tonight, that I talked to James Scott late this afternoon, I wanted to make you aware of something that we're doing. You know, we've talked about these LPR cameras. We'll be adding 10 new cameras to our system. We're looking to put cameras in a couple of locations that are high traffic, our parks in particular. We'll be looking at adding some LPR cameras as they go into our parks, the Rosenwall Park, Lee Victory Park, Sharp Springs Park.
Gregory Mills.
Gregory Mills, thank you. I'm sorry, I just went brain-dead down there.
You pointed it.
I was thinking about...
Right down here.
I wasn't going to call it Grisham Springs, but Gregory Mills. And then we are going to be looking at adding a couple more in our downtown area to give us, as people come into the community, that we have a kind of a central point. And I want to show you, I want to give you some numbers to make you understand what's going on. In the last 30 days, in the last 30 days, 1,565,258 license plates have been read coming in and out of our town. Though, unique plates, which are plates that were only registered one time, 1,163,000. So there's about 400,000 that are repeat. That's Jerry going in and out, Mark going in and out.
Jerry can leave smart.
Yeah.
Jerry walks everywhere.
As long as there's a bathroom along the trail, Jerry's not driving.
He's got the key to the bathroom.
He's got a key.
That's right. In that time of one month, we had 180 hits out of those reads for stolen plates, stolen cars, or missing person. And in the last 60 days, we've had 376 hits related to those incidents. We've had 30, roughly 30 plus or minus arrests associated in the last 30 days to those hits. So the cameras are being effective for us. So we're excited about adding the chief and I and Todd, we met, what, about a month ago?
Yes.
And we actually have the cameras ordered, so we'll be putting, we'll be deploying those very soon.
Well, we'd be adding those to both entrances of Lee Victory?
Both entrances of Lee Victory, both entrances of Sharp Springs.
Perfect.
And then Gregory Mills is just the one entrance, but yes, we will be adding.
You know how many years I waited to ask that question? Both entrances of Lee Victory?
Yep.
Those would help with stolen vehicles, Amber Alerts.
Oh, so many things that were...
They have some good pluses to them. I know that we as a council are often brought up to snuff on some of the car thefts and things that are taking place around here, and I know Chief's in the back back there, and so is Captain Dwyer, but we've received more of those in the recent days probably than what we thought was going on, and it's because the license plate readers are picking them up and catching those people as they tend to try to steal your vehicle.
It's turned out to be a very, very good tool for our police department.
Well, only because I live with him, I can tell you that other agencies...
He lives with chief.
No, chief wouldn't live with me. I'd be kicked out first day.
He was asleep till you just said that. Taylor says, "Which chief, which chief?" Go back to sleep, chief.
But I can tell you, other agencies also access our cameras and have had some pretty significant cases that were helped to be solved because of those readers in our community. So it's not just the Town of Smyrna that's benefiting, so...
Couple other things real quick, if you don't mind. I got a call that was forwarded to me from the fire department from a Ms. Davis that last week had a accident, her husband had an accident on Jefferson Pike, a significant accident. Our Smyrna Fire Department got there on scene and helped put... They were in the process of moving, and a lot of their personal items were scattered over the road, and our fire department took the time to help them re-get, regroup that stuff back, and they were just very, very appreciative that we took the time to help them because there was a lot of precious memories that would have been lost if we had not done that. Also, I got a nice note from the fire chief in Laverne. We've recently had a couple of incidents, you've seen the CAD reports on it where we've supplied mutual aid over to Laverne in the times that they had some fires, and they just reached out and said, "Thank you so much for doing that," and they appreciate our chiefs working with them. Also, since we met, we've had the Fourth of July, and I just wanted to say again how much I appreciate, and I know the council appreciates, our town employees, the fire department, the police department, the Parks and Rec Department, and all those people, the folks from Public Works getting the area cleaned up and ready for the park to be used by our citizens for the Fourth of July, and we had a tremendous show. Again, chief, just really appreciate all the work you do, but also all those other departments, like I said, Parks and Rec and so many people make that happen. I mentioned Parks and Rec, July is actually Parks and Rec Month. Want to recognize our employees down at the Parks and Recs Department. We have a robust park system, and we have an exceptional staff, and we appreciate each and every one of them. They work every day to provide our citizens a great park experience. And as Jeff said a few minutes ago, I think I'd put our Parks Department against anybody in the state, probably in the southeast as far as the work that they do and the facilities that we have to supply our community. The last thing I'll do, I'm going to, I think, be recognized like HG is with be kind, but don't litter, love where you live, folks. We're doing a little better. I think some of our community is looking a little cleaner, but we still have some problem areas, and we're working on that. But, you know, keep a bag in your car for your trash, stop throwing food on the side of the road, you know, secure your newspapers, cans, and light stuff in back of your trucks. If you're going to the dump, all those kind of things where we have the ability for things to fly out and land on our roads and our roadside, so be kind and love where you live.
I think we need to make you a trash sash. You can be the official...
Tennessee Trash.
Tennessee Trash.
Town Manager.
Town Manager.
Okay, Jeffreyelle?
Only thing I'll say, just because I know that he's usually watching, happy birthday to my father, Dick Peachey. Turns 78 next week.
He's a young 78.
He is.
He thinks he's 40.
Only as old as you feel. Thanks, Jeff. Raquel?
I would like to just go off of what Brian talked about with the Independence Day Celebration. Thank you to all of the departments that participated, and I think it was a good event for all who came out. And next, I would like to say thank you to everyone for the birthday wishes, because I made a milestone, and apparently I'm the oldest of the three of us who will all be hitting a milestone this year. But I hit mine on the 5th, and I want to thank everyone for your birthday wishes. And I would also like to say happy birthday to my Uncle William Peebles, whose birthday is today.
Great.
You will tell everybody what milestone that was by chance?
I hit 50.
What was the accent? It's Mary Esther, it's 49. It's all accent. Welcome to the mezzanine.
I actually got an AARP letter the same week.
I refuse to answer those.
Britt signed us both up. It's not a business couple.
Well, there you go.
So, HG?
I'm done.
You're done? Don't look a day older.
Well, thank you.
Once again, as has been stated, the Fourth of July thing was great this year. Kudos to all the town employees who participated in it, and a great show. Chief, as always, I bet you designed that yourself, didn't you? Okay. Condolences to the family of Jim Wilson, who just passed away this last week. Longtime Smyrna resident, raised his family here, terrific people. Also, Mike Gasser, who was, I think, three years ahead of us in school.
I think he was 67.
Was he that old? I don't think he was that old.
I think he was.
67, Jerry?
I think he was.
He was two years older than me. He graduated in 71.
71, okay, okay.
We're trying to do the math here, Jerry, how old are you?
I'm 66.
But the Gasser family, as the Wilsons have been here for a very long time, and just terrific people, and Mike was such a... Just a... Well, you know, he was kind, Brian. He was a very kind individual. And I will wrap up with that and say, be kind, don't litter, and shop local.
Uh-oh.
Yeah.
He's going to take over your job.
I'm telling you. I started twitching when they said Ephors. We're beginning to become kindred spirits.
Nobody's going to make that motion, that was his domain.
That's right.
Tim?
You guys are probably going to get tired of hearing this, but Mike, your staff did a tremendous job at the Independence Day Celebration. I don't think I recall seeing anybody that didn't have a smile on their face and was working hard, so thank you to the parks. Chief, firefighters, outstanding job. I'm always really proud when I see the color guard and the precision and the dedication that they put forward for our country and for our town. Chief Arnold, always feel safe out there. And, I mean, what a night. My son and his girlfriend, I think it's okay to say that, they were up from Panama City Beach and said it was the best fireworks show and celebration they'd ever attended, so thank you to all.
Great. Jerry?
Basically, everything everyone's said so far as well goes for me, but it just seems like here lately we have been going to funeral home quite often. I know the other day when we went to the Wilson family and then left there and went to the Gasser family, so as they've said before, my condolences are also go out to those families as well. Also, the Fourth of July was, it was a lot of fun, and it's just like we were ready to get out to do something, and it was, it was just a lot of fun, and I appreciate everything that all you guys have done to make that happen. And it looks like the citizens had a great time as well. And today is mine and Patty's 36th anniversary, so happy anniversary to Patty.
Happy anniversary, 36 years.
All right. You know, by the time it gets to you and I, everything's been done, right? So what I will say is that the fireworks this year, a lot of folks may not know, but two years ago, we actually paid for those and put in the order because of COVID, we didn't have it last year. And during that process, we asked that that provider provide us a little bit more finale at the end. And so I've heard a lot of comments about the finale, and I think that kind of capped it off the whole night very well, and I think it was money well spent, and... But I just want to say thanks to everybody, the parks, the police, fire, everybody in the town that contributed to the effort. It was one of the probably best events we've had in a long time, probably because we were all missing it so much. We hadn't been able to really get together, so it was good to be able to do that. And again, the fireworks were amazing, and finale was definitely worth it. Mike, I don't have all the details, and I don't know if you're ready to mention it, but I thought someone would have mentioned the United Way Golf Tournament, which is opening to the public Friday. So we do this annual event, for those of you that don't know, where we sponsor a United Way Golf Tournament at the Town of Smyrna's Municipal Golf Course. It's August 6th this year, and I believe there's a... We pretty much have the course for the whole day, I believe, 7:00 AM and a 1:00 PM tee time, so you can look for the announcement, I'm sure, on our Facebook page on Friday, and get your team signed up. My understanding is a couple of the previous council members that have lost have chosen not to play this year. I guess they don't want the humiliation again, but that's okay. We have picked up Mark, who is probably their rest player anyway, so...
Oh, without a doubt, I'm not that good.
So since I think we're the only council that's playing in the tournament and on the same team, we'll win the count, from the council will be the winners, for sure.
Well, just so you know, it's something I always look forward to, but because of timing this year with back to school, I was not able to do it, but I don't know that we've ever been last. There's always people behind us. Yes, always. But we always have the best time.
You mean like last to come in, or last in your score? What would that mean?
We're always last to come in.
Because I bet you're the last to come in a lot of times.
I guarantee you that.
I know that at least two years...
If it's anything like Captain Coos run, they'll leave before we turn in the scorecard.
That's probably true. But we always have the best time.
Yes, we do.
Always have the best time, so... And I'll be honest, I'm disappointed that I'm not going to get to participate this year.
They are learning, though. They play once a year, so they're learning.
Yes. So technically, it'll be every two years now, you know? Because after, if we get to play next year, so...
That's it, I'm done.
Well, so you mentioned working like you are for back to school. I have a wife that's in the business of a school, and I can tell you, they are already counting down the days of freedom until they go back, so to all the teachers, all the people who work in the school system, I know you're counting the days down, you're running out of days, but we all appreciate the jobs they do. You've been a teacher, you've been a teacher, still am, and so that's not a job I would have the patience for, I can tell you that right now. So thank you to those people who are getting ready to gear back and go back and be with your children every day and teach them.
Oh, you don't realize they start at the end of July.
It's coming, it gets quicker every year. That's what I told Connie, I said, "It's like, you got to go back when?"
Yeah.
You're not even getting 60 days anymore.
That's right.
I know. So to those that participated, I'm not going to repeat everybody, but thank you to all the crew and team that did the Independence Day Celebration. I do want to add to that, though, we are all tickled to death to have a celebration, look at our city and be proud of our city, but let's not forget the reason for Independence Day and those that served and those that sacrificed, and that God blesses our country richly because we are who we are. So I want to make sure that those people that have lost their lives and the sacrifice of our country are not forgotten because it's just fireworks, right? So to all the people that participated, though, we do appreciate you guys. My grandkids got to play over at the Freedom Playground this week, and it was a hit. They loved it. They came home talking about it, and they love that Freedom Playground, so... There's been mention of Jim and Ava Wilson. Our prayers go out to Ava and the family. Jim was a good man, a dear friend to me. He helped mentor me in a lot of ways growing up, so at church. Ann and Jim Farrell, Ann Farrell passed away, a part of that group, and our condolences to Ann's family and Jim especially. Mike Gasser was mentioned. The Gasser family is a kind of an iconic name here in Smyrna. The day I moved here, I met some of the Gassers, and so to all that family, we want to give our condolences and prayers to them, too. And lastly, I saw this week, there was a lady in Smyrna named Jean Spann. Jean and I worked together in the real estate business back in probably the late 90s or so, in the early 2000s, at the same company, in the same office where I was a broker, and so I had a chance to really get to know Jean a lot, and so we just want to pass my condolences on to the Spann family, that's all.
Steve and Raquel, that's Jennifer's mama, so...
Couple of items. First of all, Farmer's Market is open each Saturday, 8:00 AM until noon in the Historic Depot District, so thank you to Carpe Artista and Smyrna Parks and Rec for your work to provide the opportunity to shop and enjoy in the heart of our community. Registration is open for the 2021 Top Gun Night Run. The race will be held Friday, November 5th at 7:00 in Lee Victory Recreation Park. It is a 3.7-mile course and includes Smyrna Rutherford County Airport and the Smyrna Golf Course with the finish line at the Captain Jeff Coos Memorial. Spectators and runners can enjoy live music and food trucks there at the memorial. The run will be chipped timed and limited to 650 participants. All proceeds from the race will benefit the maintenance and upkeep of the memorial, and you can visit our town website to learn more and to register.[1753.72] you can visit our town website to learn more and to register. Our Smyrna Outdoor Adventure Center is hosting a new education exhibit through September 5th. It's called Run, Jump, Fly: Adventures in Action, and it encourages children to discover the fun in being physically active in a non-competitive environment. And children have the opportunity to explore activities such as Kung-Fu, surfing, snowboarding, yoga, and horizontal climbing. And you can call the SOAC or visit the town's website to learn more. Couple of items. I want to thank the Boys and Girls Club for asking me to come out to read. I always enjoy getting back in the classroom or to speak in front of groups. And it had been a while since I'd been in the club, and it is, is it still the highest attendance in the state?
It is.
It's amazing to think that the highest attendance is right here in Smyrna, and I think second highest is in Murfreesboro. So definitely something that was needed. Mike, thank you to your group for the Independence Day celebration, but also to all the other departments. You know, when you drove through town the day of and the day before, you saw all the cones that were put up, all the signs that were put up. So it's so many departments that takes, it takes to put that on. And all of us as a town get to enjoy it, but it's all of the employees that are working hard to make sure that we have the opportunities to enjoy it. So I think because we're having such a good time, we sometimes forget about the hard work that goes into an event like that. Also, want to thank Chaplain York for inviting us out for the Grove service that we had at Sharp Springs on Fourth of July. It was a great day to get together and to worship, and we appreciate the invitation. I'd also like to pass on condolences to all of the families who have lost loved ones. It's a tough time. Jim Wilson was actually my T-ball coach, so goes back a little ways and have a great relationship with the Wilson family. So I'm so sorry about Jim. But anything else?
Mayor, I have...
Oh, I forgot. One more thing, I forgot you.
During the Fourth of July celebration, two things had happened that were unique this year. One was Victory Church had a dunking booth raising money for the Nourish Food Bank. And I was asked to make sure and thank each and every one of us that were able to participate. The mayor, Steve, Jerry, Todd Spearman, we all took a couple of dunks for the food bank and raised about $233 at the dunking booth, and then they matched that, so they made a donation of $500. The other thing that I wanted to mention is in our booth tonight, I'd like to ask him to step out. Tom, if you could get the gentleman from Stewart's Creek.
Chris Bissinger.
Chris Bissinger. Chris reached out to Kathy, and we discussed this.
Chris, you're going to have to get on Kathy.
I was going to say, come on to the microphone.
You got to come out here.
Yes, yes.
I met with Chris, what, a year and a half, two years? It's been two years ago. And we have enjoyed a really close relationship with his organization at SC Television at Stewart's Creek. They televised our Fourth of July celebration for us this year, and I've had several people mention that they really appreciated not being able to get out, to be able to see the fireworks. And I think they're working, he and Brett are working on an edited copy to put out that will be showing on Channel 3 and stuff very soon. But Chris, I just wanted to say thank you for what you guys did. I think you had nine students show up.
In July.
In July, out of school, come in to do the fireworks, and just tremendous.
So people from all over the country were watching.
Absolutely.
I mean, it was amazing to see where people were checking in from. But can you tell us a little bit about the process your students went through to, to be able to put on that night?
Well, I mean, we're very blessed to have the relationship with the county, with the town, the council, and through Rutherford County Schools. Once we found a location, which was difficult with the amount of trees and things that are in the way, Brett and Kathy were like, "Let's do it." And Brian completely agreed. We brought kids in in July, and they all showed up in their Stewart's Creek TV shirts. It went off, and it was great. We had a good time, and they really enjoyed it. So thank you for the opportunity.
And they got great experience, too.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We tried very hard.
Chris, who was flying the drone? Was that us or you?
That was the fireworks company. Yeah. I'd like to see some of that footage.
We're trying to get some footage.
I think it was actually an employee of the fireworks company. It was not the company itself. It was one of the employees.
I thought Pete you got out there.
It was me.
Chief has been trying to reach out and get copies of that, because we'd love to see that footage.
It's interesting to see the fireworks blow up, and the drone was right up there.
Yeah.
I was pretty interested, because a lot of people may not know, but that's a restricted fly zone. So to be able to fly that there, we had to get FAA approval.
It was Jeff, he tried, it was rotating.
It was not Stewart's Creek television.
And it was not the town of Smyrna, or the town attorney for Smyrna.
I was going to say, what about the town attorney?
It wouldn't have taken off with GPS on if it wasn't approved.
Not on mine.
Not mine either. Mine's the same way.
We didn't know what that little green dot was for a few minutes, and we thought there was something on the screen.
The Fourth of July was awesome with Stewart's Creek, but it's not the only thing they've done. You know, they've been involved in our Christmas parade. And by the way, our first meeting for the Christmas parade is this Friday with some of our staff to get started on that. So again, we just appreciate the relationship and the work that's being done, and how valuable it is to be able to put that stuff on television for our citizens that are sometimes shut in, those kind of things, or live away from here.
I watched it later that night after the fact and didn't realize it was happening, and then, of course, watched it. And it was, it was really cool to see, so good job.
Thank your students for us.
Thank you, I will. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. If nothing else, then we are adjourned.